Adrianne Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Monday, April 18th, 2022 at 5:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting a work session on the Arts and Culture Master Plan.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for April 18th, 2022. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Council members Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rousell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Our work session topic is the Arts and Culture Master Plan. I will turn it over to Arts and Cultural Affairs Coordinator Jenny Peterson-Brant.
Hello and good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for having me here tonight. As Adrianne said, I'm Jenny Peterson-Brant. I'm the Arts and Cultural Affairs Coordinator for the City of Dubuque, and it is my esteemed honor to present to you tonight an overview of significant recent efforts that have advanced implementation of the city's Arts and Culture Master Plan. So our agenda for the evening, or my sort of five goals for tonight, one is to introduce you to some of the people and the organizations who are actively participating in implementation of the Arts and Culture Master Plan. Two is to provide you with some history and context of when and why the plan was created and where we are with it today. Third, which is the most fun part of the presentation, I think, will be to offer you a snapshot of a few of the major activities and initiatives that have been undertaken in 2021 by the city, our funded partners or community organizations who we're actively engaging with at this time. And during that section, I'll also be inviting some others to the podium tonight to highlight their work and their own voices. Fourth, I'll draw attention to some of the work that our office will be focusing on throughout 2022 and some of those efforts that you'll be hearing about in the coming months as things come more into fruition and move forward. And then finally, I want to leave you tonight with offering some big-picture recommendations for City Council to consider in future goal-setting that we feel could significantly propel impact of the plan, and then hopefully have some time at the end, five to 10 minutes, for question and answer from all of you. So let's begin by diving into some of the people who are involved in driving the Arts and Culture Master Plan of Dubuque forward. Again, I'm Jenny Peterson-Brant, the Arts and Cultural Affairs Coordinator. This coming July will mark my third year in that role. Prior to what I do now at the city, I've spent 12 years working in arts administration leadership positions at for-profit galleries, artist residency programs, and nonprofit community-based visual arts and performing arts centers throughout the Midwest. I hold a bachelor and master's degree of fine art, and I'm also, in my infinite free time, I am a practicing studio artist that makes and sells handmade pottery around the country. Last August, we had the fortune of hiring Mike Williams to fill our unfrozen intern position. Mike brings to this 10-hour-a-week position a passion for creating connections to and amongst the creative community and developing relationships between institutions and individuals. In addition to his role at the city, Mike is a drone operator and a fabulous photographer, running a business as Elevated Images Dubuque, and he also works full-time at John Deere. Next up is the Arts and Cultural Affairs Advisory Commission. The seven-member commission actively supports and advises the work of the Office of Arts and Cultural Affairs. Current commissioners include Paula Newhouse, who is our chairperson. She works as a grant writer with the Dubuque County Historical Society. Nick Holder, our vice chair, who works as the executive director of the Grand Opera House. Our recorder is Ryan Decker, who works as the assistant professor and director of theater at Loris College and is also the artistic director of Trainwreck Productions. Ali Levis-Sour is a working artist, as well as president of the Dubuque County Fine Arts Society and also the administrative assistant to the Julian Dubuque International Film Festival. Sue Reindell, who is the bank of our institutional knowledge on the commission, she works as the artistic director for the Bell Tower Theater. We welcomed Tom Robbins this past year. He is the executive director of the Heritage Center at the University of Dubuque, and we also welcomed Noel Chesney, who is the executive director of the Dubuque County Humane Society. I just wanted to make a note that we do have four of our commissioner terms coming up or expiring at the end of June, so on your agendas in the coming months, you'll be seeing applications from new applicants and commissioners looking to renew those positions with the So incredibly critical to the plan's implementation are the people behind all of the organizations that you see up on the screen here. This is an incredibly strong network of established nonprofit partners that we interact with, engage on, and engage with on a regular basis. Dubuque, as you know, is home to a wide variety of arts and cultural events, attractions, and nonprofit organizations. Everything from our nearly 150-year-old Dubuque Museum of Art, which is the oldest cultural institution in the state of Iowa, to the outstanding Dubuque Arboretum and Botanical Gardens, the city's active theater scene that dates back to at least 1889 with the building of the iconic Grand Opera House, to grassroots creations and more than 40 murals in our downtown area. We know that there is no shortage of creativity in the city and in our region. So included in the graphic above or on your screens as you're looking at it, these are the arts and culture nonprofit organizations who have either, the arts and culture organizations who either regularly receive operating support from us, apply for special projects, and in the mix are also some non-arts and culture organizations who infuse arts and cultural work into what they do and thus have received funding through our special projects funding program. One of the things that we love about these grant programs and about all of these partners is that it helps Dubuque residents to benefit from an expansive and year-round presence of programs and experiences, both in terms of a vibrant quality of life, having access to a vast informal learning, a vast informal network of learning opportunities and reaping rewards of an economic impact that's estimated at $47.2 million annually. So often in my job, I get asked, especially with Dubuque being the size of community that is, that it is, I often get asked why we have a Arts and Culture Master Plan and what is its role in our community. So one of the things I wanted to touch on is that with the city of Dubuque, even though we all are, we are a smaller community in terms of when you think of big cultural, cultural centers like Denver, Minneapolis, or Chicago, or places like that, we as a community have a really strong history of making sure that arts and culture are priority and are priority and are accessible to our community. And I, when we look back at the establishment of the Arts and Culture Master Plan, I think it was just the city leaders decided that arts and culture should be a cornerstone to being a sustainable, vibrant community and being a national leader in the 21st century as we bounced back from the economic downturns of the 1980s. Today, municipal arts and culture plans are considered an essential part of any toolkit for a forward-thinking city or community anywhere. Organizations like Americans for the Arts have long touted the importance of having a strong arts and culture sector for the health of its local economy. In adopting an Arts and Culture Master Plan, the city and the community at large have a long-range vision on how arts and culture can be a driving force in creating a place that is socially and culturally vibrant, a place that is welcoming and inclusive, a place where people of all backgrounds are drawn to live, work, and to play. And the plan also exists to help that wealth of organizations who we just had on the last screen, who have really strong ties to the community, who have a history of very strong and accessible programming. The plan helps to ensure that they are supported in their collaborations, that their sustainability is fostered, and their impact is maximized. So I'll skip over the first few years of the plan's timeline there because you've all heard that before, but I did want to point out that I added to the timeline this year, the timeline of the chunk of time from 2019 to 2021, which is the time where new staff was added, and we, as we all know, 2020 and 2021 were huge shifts for an entire community and especially in the arts and culture sector for artists and organizations. And I also wanted to highlight tonight that 2020 also shed a brighter light on racial and social inequities within and outside of the arts and culture sector nationwide, and I feel that this has fostered a renewed awareness of the role that arts and creative practices can play and should play in giving everyone a voice in a community and bringing communities together. I also put on here for 2022, one of the results of having an Arts and Culture Master Plan in place is that it has been used as a critical resource for our organizations and even our office in applying for grant funding that's come available. Having that toolkit, having that roadmap and framework laid out speaks volumes to funders when providing money for arts and cultural activities, especially in smaller communities. So one of the pieces of our Arts and Culture Master Plan is that after the work was done by Lord Creative Consulting or Lord Cultural Resources to create that plan, the commission and community members worked together to actually create a community engagement strategy that would sort of lay out a roadmap or sort of be this ecosystem of how the city, the commission, and community members and organizations would work together to achieve priorities and goals of that plan. So the plan, the community engagement strategy was launched in, it was created in 2017, and the recruitment of people getting involved in it was in about 2018. The way that this is laid out, there's five working groups who are all of those community volunteers serving in those five different buckets that all relate to topics within the Arts and Culture Master Plan, who feed their ideas and their work up to a task force that sort of feeds out then to both the commission, my office, and then all hopefully feeding up to city council, city leadership, but also private investment and private businesses in our community. One of the things that I want to note today is that the Arts and Culture Master Plan and the work that's happening through it has really gotten to a point that this model of an engagement strategy isn't working, because this was great for idea generating and bringing people together to start doing the work, but now that the work is getting done, it's a little bit too much complex. So this is an idea of this CES, which we call it internally. We're taking that back to the commission and working through that in the next year to come up with a new strategy, new community engagement strategy that we want to bring to all of you to understand better how that work is being done. So when we start to walk through the plan a little bit, I just wanted to highlight sort of starting at the top, the high-level goals that are associated with that. One being that arts and culture are a driver for economic development, that by supporting and leveraging the contributions of the arts, culture bearers, and creatives for economic development, it creates an authentic sense of place, boosts the city's brand, and aids in the talent attraction and retention in our community. The next goal of the plan is that arts and culture are key tools to promoting inclusivity, diversity, harmony, and understanding. The third goal of having our plan is the integration of arts and cultural community and city leadership. So this is everything from having someone like myself, who is, who is an individual creative and working within city government, also having our Arts and Cultural Affairs Commission, but then also looking at different tactics in which we can bring creatives and their innovation and their ingenuity when it comes to how do you engage a community in creating a more equitable community of choice, making sure that we find ways to bring those people to the table at the beginning of planning and of conversations. Our fourth goal with the plan is related to opportunity and accessibility. The idea that Dubuque is known as a city with participatory arts and cultural opportunities in all corners of the community is something that is known not just here or regionally or in the Midwest, but that it's known on a national scale, and that we're working to remove barriers to participation, to minimize those and to remove them so that we encourage equitable and inclusive opportunities for engagement and representation. Goal number five of the plan is involvement and participation, that we want to see residents from all corners of our community actively participating in arts and culture to enable greater involvement and participation in the community in general amongst its citizens and our visitors. And then our final goal, which is probably my least favorite goal, but it's a part of city government, is that goal of establishing clear policies, guidelines, and procedures to enable efficient and effective governance of Dubuque's arts and cultural sector and the city's involvement in it. So to achieve those six different goals, the priorities of the plan involve four different, four different areas. The first being to promote and support arts and culture as Dubuque's competitive edge. Second, boosting capacity for arts and culture to thrive in Dubuque. Third, fostering engagement in arts and culture at all levels. And finally, cultivating connections within and outside the sector to benefit the community at whole. So then as we go into the, even deeper than into the plan, are 76 strategies, where I will not go through all those tonight because we don't have the enormous time to do that, but in my presentation tonight, I'm going to be calling out several of those strategies where we see some of the most exciting projects and efforts going forward in relation to project, in relation to organizations or efforts that the Office of Arts and Culture Affairs is pretty directly connected to and involved with. So one of the things, before we start to go through those projects, I did just want to brown us in a little bit of what COVID-19 meant and the last two years meant for the arts and culture sector locally, but also in our state. Iowa's arts and entertainment and recreation industry lost 4,500 jobs between February 2020 and April 2021, according to figures from Iowa Workforce Development. The state's nonprofit arts and culture sector lost nearly $50 million in revenue, according to studies from Americans for the Arts. And just to put those in context, in a typical year, the arts and culture sector of Iowa employs 43,000 Iowans and accounts for 2.3% of the state's economy, according to the U.S. Bureau of Economic Analysis. On a local level, what we saw was that on March 17th, 2020, that was the date that all of our local museums, theaters, galleries, live music venues, everything of that similar manner, were ordered to close due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Over the next 12 months that followed, we did a little, we did a little study with our arts and culture nonprofits who we, we work with, and they reported to us that collectively between that time of April 2020 and April of 2021, that they saw a drop in revenue of at least $3.9 million. Like our tourism and hospitality sectors, we know that our for-profit arts-based businesses, live music and entertainment venues, independent artists and creatives experience significant financial losses and struggles during the pandemic, and those are numbers that we haven't even attempted to, to calculate because of the number of, the sheer number of entities and people that are involved in that sector. But I want to take an opportunity to applaud our, our local organizations during that time. One of the things that I saw was they became incredibly creative in how they engaged their audiences and in finding ways to continue their programs and connections to the community. They took their concerts, their historic tours, their art exhibitions, their gallery talks, their film festivals, they took them online, and they continued to be there for the community and inspiring them throughout the pandemic. A lot of the organizations had to shift a significant amount of their staff time to grant-writing efforts as we saw new granting opportunities pop up throughout the pandemic to keep those organizations alive, and I think it's something that Corey actually likes to say quite a bit, which is the phrase of drinking from a fire hose, which was the same thing for our arts and culture nonprofits, as the information was just fierce and steady coming at them to help them navigate the pandemic and take care of their staff and their audiences alike. So things have really just started to reopen with the arts and culture sector locally, and I'm also really proud of the way that our nonprofit organizations have been incredibly cautious and on the forefront of adhering to city mandates and following CDC guidelines when it comes to reopening up their venues. And I think it's going to be a while before they're all back to normal, if we're ever back to normal. So now to start to go through some of those projects that have really contributed to the four different priorities of the city's Arts and Culture Master Plan over the past year. Again, the first priority is to promote and support arts and culture as Dubuque's competitive edge. What this means is that Dubuque, in order for it to fully leverage its arts and cultural sector as an economic driver and differentiator, a concerted, multi-pronged effort is necessary to broaden funding sources and increase investment in the short and long term to realize the full potential of arts and culture to contribute to Dubuque's long-term success. This priority stresses that investment can come and should take multiple forms, from financial to, to professional development, to regulatory support, to promotion, and diligent implementation and evaluation of the plan. One of the projects that I want to call out that kicked off, actually started to kick off in 2020 with some of the discovery work, but that was actually able to go, start moving forward full throttle in 2021, is an arts and cultural, arts and cultural communications campaign, which is, seeks to undertake a strategic branding and marketing communications campaign to promote awareness of Dubuque's arts and cultural community at home and in other markets while attracting participation from outside Dubuque. So thanks to a $10,000 grant from Travel Iowa Tourism and a $15,000 grant from the Iowa Arts, Iowa Arts Council and their Arts and Culture Marketing Grant that was actually funded through Federal Cares Act dollars, we were able to move forward with hiring Gigantic Design, who is currently working on developing that communications campaign for us, which we see as a branding strategy that's going to help to market our arts and cultural sector as a unified and umbrellaed approach, with a unified and umbrellaed approach and vibe. Toward this campaign, some of the work that I had mentioned being done, we had done a variety of surveys, actually collecting about 300 surveys in 2020 about community perspectives of Dubuque's arts and culture sector. And then during the pandemic, we held a variety of virtual stakeholder input sessions where we got ideas from people working within the tourism and arts and culture community that we put together to shape a creative brief that we turned over to Gigantic Design, and they're now using those materials to work on developing a name, a logo, a tagline, a web presence, and I think one of the most exciting things that I'm most excited about from this is that we'll be getting a toolkit of usable, repeatable assets that will make, will make available to any arts and culture organization, any individual who wants to sort of use that branding to put a stamp on what they do to connect all of the work across the community from a marketing standpoint. We're also excited with this campaign that we have on the Branding and Communications Work Group that's helping to put this together. We do have representation from Travel Dubuque and from GDDC, who are at that table, helping to shape that campaign to make sure that it's something that they can take a hold of and use in their recruitment efforts, whether it comes to visitors or workforce and business development. Another one of those promote and support for the competitive edge things that I wanted to highlight is two tools that are out, that exist right now and that will be working throughout the next year just to build the presence and use of them. These two tools, the We Create Dubuque Facebook group and the Creatives Directory that is held with the Dubuque County Fine Arts Society, those two tools seek to foster community building among the creative community to strengthen local support of network, a local support network of artists and creatives. So the first one, this was actually the We Create Dubuque Facebook page, which is just a simple thing of a, a public Facebook group that anybody can join, was created by the Creative Economy Working Group of our Arts and Culture Master Plan. I just actually checked the numbers today, so I was super accurate, and we have 379 members on that page, of which in the last 28 days, we had 255 active members and 30 new posts going on that page. And that page is really set up for any organization, any individual creative, any creative type of business, to share events, to share promotions, to share their new work, to share opportunities, and it's just something that kind of feeds itself as more and more people put up content and comment on each other's things and make connections. The other tool that I'm mentioning is the Creatives Directory, that again, that's a collaboration between this Creative Economy Working Group and the Dubuque County Fine Arts Society that, the Dubuque County Fine Arts Society was going through a website redevelopment and offered up and said, hey, we would love to take on and host this Creative Directory's idea, so the Creative Economy Group is helping to feed people to that, to that directory. It's still very much in kind of a beta stage. We haven't launched it super publicly yet because we're getting a few people on there. We have about three dozen right now, so that then we can kind of work out kinks in the user experience and make sure that it's what we want it to be before it goes forward out into the world and we start getting hundreds of people joining the rosters of the directory. So I had invited Travel Dubuque to come to speak on a specific project that they had actually been funded through the FY22 Special Projects Grant Program through the city of Dubuque. So they received funding and also provided investment from their organization and from other partners to tackle a project that they're calling the Dubuque Street Art Interactive Experience. And this is a partnership between Travel Dubuque and The Voices Productions, who is behind all of the murals throughout the city of Dubuque. Travel Dubuque is working with them to develop signage that will be at each of the murals throughout the community with a QR code where people can scan and look up the information about that mural of who did it, the story behind it. The project also is helping Travel Dubuque to create a really lovely little pocket map that will have all of the murals and how to navigate to all of them throughout the community, and they're also creating a mobile app that will be part of that QR code experience so it can take residents and visitors alike to all of the murals throughout the city and tell them the story behind each and every one. So those, that project was just funded this, the fiscal year that we're currently in. They're working with local photographers and local sign shop and then some other technology experts on the QR code side, or sorry, on the mobile app side of things to get those tools ready, and they will be, we're expecting those to be launched anytime soon, but definitely by June of 2022 when their grant funding period runs out, so. The second priority of the plan that I wanted to call some attention to is the boost capacity, boosting capacity for boost capacity, boosting capacity for arts and culture to thrive. This priority is, talks about being, that it's key in to creating a versatile and impactful arts and culture toolkit. In doing that, it is, is key to have the creation of conditions in which arts and cultural activity can thrive. So this means enabling a mix of both formal and planned initiatives, as well as organic and spontaneous creative endeavors. So one of the strategies within that priority is the idea of facilitating communication and coordination among the arts and culture sector, and also to develop organizational and professional capacity. And one of the best examples that we see of that that happened in 2021, but actually started in 2020, was our office creating a space every Friday where our arts and culture partners could hop onto a call and, and just basically check in with one another. It mostly started out as me wanting to check in on them to see how they were doing. A lot of our initial conversations talked about grant resources, talked about managing the pandemic, talked about changing marketing techniques, really just getting through that pandemic. But now that we've created that space every Friday, we actually continue to have these, and we've sort of switched the focus from talking about the pandemic to talking about the recovery, to bringing in speakers who can talk about equity in the arts, bringing in speakers who can talk to us about best practices and fundraising, and also just an opportunity for them to talk amongst each other and create new collaborations and new partnerships. We sort of can't talk about boosting capacity for arts and culture to thrive without acknowledging the, bringing in additional resources into our community to help outside of just city funding, to help our arts and culture nonprofit sector to, to just keep moving forward, to sustain itself, and also to bring in resources that are really aimed at helping them to develop their organizational and professional capacity. So the two that I want to call out in this that were, one was awarded actually in 2020, which was funding from the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, which we'll be launching. I think those just came before council, we'll be launching the application materials are already out that, but moving forward with recruiting applications to that, to enable organizations to have some extra funding, to very purposefully and intentionally work with BIPOC creatives and artists in our community and shaping their programs and bringing what they do to life and co-creating alongside one another. And then we also last year received the National Endowment for the Arts sub-granting for local arts agencies grant, which was a half a million dollar award that will do two, actually, it will end up doing two things. We'll have a very large chunk of money that will be getting sub-granted to those arts and culture organizations specifically for their operations. This isn't about them creating new programs. This will be about helping them to grow and to build that capacity so they can recover and to do, take their organization and their programs to the next level. And then with that funding, we'll also be creating an individual artist grant program, which we haven't had before in the city of Dubuque. So this will be an opportunity to sort of pilot that and for artists to step forward with their projects, their ideas of how they can use arts and culture and their talents to improve their community. And hopefully that's something we hear a lot of great ideas for and continue that in the future. So one of, I'm going to bring Nick Halder up quickly to just give a little, a little story on the Arts and Cultural Affairs Advisory Commission's work this last year on developing its strategic plan.
Thanks Jenny. As you mentioned, my name's Nick Halder. I'm the Executive and Artistic Director at the Grand Opera House and also the Vice Chair for the Arts and Cultural Affairs Commission. And it's my pleasure to be here on behalf of the Commission, just share a little bit about the work that we've done in relationship to the master plan this last year and kind of the, the main project that we undertook, in addition to our regular work that we do with the Commission, was we were able to have a facilitated strategic planning session to look beyond just our regular kind of monthly kind of duties that we undertake in the various projects and also look at what we can do beyond that. And specific, a lot of it revolves around the master plan once again. Each initiative, and we do have four of them as part of our strategic plan, is, is designed to make sure that they all have the greatest community impact, whether it's looking at our own structure as, as a commission and looking to see how we can be more inclusive and diverse in our own makeup and also maybe our, our term limits, those types of things. Then also actually looking at the master plan in itself, as Jenny pointed out earlier, that CES, that kind of what is the ecosystem in which it lives in, and seeing if there's ways to streamline that and really make sure that we've kind of gotten halfway through the master plan in terms of the timeline, but wanting to make sure that we keep it moving forward and so that we don't lose steam here in the second half of the plan. So looking for new ways to also get more community stakeholders involved in advancing that work. In addition to looking also at our grant programs and evaluating what is currently working, maybe what could be shifted for the future, we're hoping, as Jenny said, through some of these more recent grant programs that we're able to have through these new funding sources, to see how, what maybe works with those and maybe how we can tie that into our own work here with the city funds going forward. And then also just obviously advancing advocacy for the arts and also for us organizations, giving us, as Jenny mentioned earlier, some of those, those tools to help us on our own in advocating the work that we're doing and sharing that with the, the community. So we're looking forward to, you know, obviously continuing the, the work that we have done, but now we've, we've gotten the strategic plan put together. It actually started here the first part of this year and kind of tandemly working on those action steps as then we move forward here with all of our other work. Thank you.
And one of the things, since I didn't have the slide up at the, at the time, that I think neither Nick or I said, is that the strategic plan that the Commission just put together is actually structured as a, as a five-year plan, so taking us from early 2022 through the end of 2026 in their work and guiding that. So the next priority that I want to highlight is, the third priority of the Arts and Culture Master Plan, is the idea of fostering engagement at all levels. So this priority speaks to the idea that greater participation at all levels, from those beginners, amateurs, professionals, the people who see themselves as quote unquote artists, the people, people who exist in that sector as volunteers, who are participants, who are audience members, as well as thinking about that all levels from the perspective of being all ages, all abilities, and all races, being engaged in and helping to create a robust arts and culture scene that mutually benefits the community at large. One of the strategies within that particular priority is to deepen the appreciation for arts and culture among the general public. And to do so, one of the suggested strategies was the idea of designing and implementing a campaign to make Dubuqueers more aware of the value of arts and culture to the quality of life. So one of the things that we took advantage of is that my office and the Arts Commission works together every fall to promote October, which is National Arts and Humanities Month. Usually that's involved a proclamation, you know, a little bit of posting on social media about what that means. But because of having an intern this year, we actually dedicated Mike's time, Mike Williams' time prior to October, we, we set him forth the task. He had a list of 31 themes throughout the month of October that he had to design content around and finding things, big, big and small throughout the Dubuque community that could, he could feature. So he highlighted organizations, individual artists, events, all sorts of things throughout the month. And it was really, I think to us, when we got done with the month, we saw those posts going up throughout October and we thought, wow, this engagement is great. And then we contacted the Public Information Office at the city and we said, hey, get us some numbers on like, what did that engagement really look like? And we were kind of shocked to learn that this campaign and just those Show Your Art Challenge posts had reached over 12,000 people across our Facebook and our Instagram channels in the month of October. We saw a 98% increase in our Facebook reach and a 23% increase in our Instagram reach from the month prior. We, just some little fun facts that we thought were kind of astonishing is that, that 31-day challenge, we had over 2,000 of those reactions, whether it was the thumbs up, the hearts, the oh my gosh faces on, on posts that we made. We had 79 total comments that were left and 174 shares. And as somebody who is, you know, regularly engaged with our social media channels, that like, that number of commenting and sharing of our posts was just unheard of. So this is something that we are definitely going to repeat next year as we go into, or this coming year, as we go into that National Arts and Humanities Month promotion. So in terms of that fostering engagement piece, one of the projects that we want to call out, which we don't have a lot of direct influence or import in right now, other than just really being a resource as they get this going, but is with the Voices Studios project that is going up on Central Avenue through the Voices Productions organization that, as we know, is behind all the murals in the community. Voices Productions has purchased the former Diamond Vogel Building. They did that during the pandemic, decided to buy a building and create a new art center. But they bought the building, they're currently working on the rehab of that space with the idea that this is going to be a community gathering space, a community exhibition space, and hopefully also bringing artists to our community to then work in neighborhoods and work on local projects and initiatives that people want to see happen. So this is something that we're just really excited is happening and looking forward to keeping tabs on as it develops and hopefully throw some grant ideas their way as they cross my desk. So the partner project that we want to highlight under the fostering engagement piece is I want to bring up to the podium, Mickey Robinson, who is the Operations Manager for the Bell Tower Theater.
Good evening. As Jenny said, I'm Mickey Robinson. I'm the Operations and Marketing Manager for the Bell Tower Theater, which in case you don't know, we're a small not-for-profit community theater located out on Asbury Road and celebrating our 20th anniversary this year. The project that Jenny asked me to talk about today actually was born in one of the Friday check-ins. About a year ago, Jenny brought Tony Els Camp from Leisure Services in to talk about the Leisure Services program specifically around the arts. And we realized that we had an opportunity to achieve our mission and to overcome a barrier that we'd been facing for a long time. And Tony was looking for people to help teach kids. And teaching kids is something we've been doing for a very long time, but that we have only ever done at the theater. And what this project did was give us an opportunity to take our show on the road. And in pictured, pictured there is Sue Flogel, who is, who spent over 30 years at Eisenhower Elementary School as the music teacher before she joined us at the Bell Tower Theater, who directs all of our kids' shows in the summer and is one of our main educators. And what Sue did is she taught numerous preschoolers, in that particular picture, those are toilet paper roll kazoo's that they made during class, and she taught the numerous preschool classes, both at Flora Park and at the amphitheater at the B Branch, that the kids had a fantastic time, and actually so did Sue, if you know Sue, this is right up her alley. She also had an opportunity to work on a week-long camp with older kids at Asbury Park. And what I, what we particularly liked is that kids did not have to come to the theater in order to access our programs. Education has always been an important part of what the Bell Tower has done, and this gave us a real opportunity to partner with the city. And we would not have been able to deliver programs like this without the partnership with Leisure Services. So, thanks.
So our final priority to highlight, and I don't have a ton of time left, so we'll go kind of fast, is the cultivating connections priority. And strangely enough, I feel like this is one that COVID, even though we were all isolating and quarantining in our own homes, the, the use of virtual technologies throughout COVID-19 actually led to some of the most important relationship building and connection cultivating that I feel like I've been able to do with my, with my job so far. So one of, one of the projects just to call out that you'll be seeing sidewalk murals going in the spring in anticipation of the Pollinator Week at the end of June, is the Art and Route Bus Shelter mural project. We had gotten funding for that actually in 2020, but really the effort to push it forward was put on hold because of the idea of trying to bring artists or get artists out and connect them with paint and supplies and public works and all these things. Like, we weren't going to do that during a pandemic. So, so we're moving that forward this year, but the idea of taking art into a space that is sort of not commonly seen as an arts and culture space to really create, create new connections for the community to appreciate art and see how it can, the different contexts that it can be in their everyday life. And the second thing that I'd like to highlight in this one is something that just started at the end of 2021, we've had two of these events so far, but something that we're calling the Creatives Cafes. For those of you that have been on council for a while, you've heard me talk about an initiative that we were calling the Dubuque Renaissance Project. And that was something, the idea of we wanted to connect organizations with BIPOC artists and sort of use the institution to create a space for those artists who are underrepresented and didn't have necessarily the, all of the same resources and connections in the community to bring them together to, to lift everyone up. Well, what we learned is that we actually had to go down, go back to the basics and we actually had to develop the relationships between the individual people that work in the institutions and who see themselves within the creative community and the creative sector of our town. And so we've been hosting these creative cafes through the work of a five-member steering group, who we individually invite different creatives and different arts and culture leaders to these meetups. And we get together over food and over just conversation about creativity and community. And it's really, it sounds simple, and I wish we would have thought about it forever ago, but it, but it came out of, but it came of the work, and this is what we're doing now, to bring people together and just creating new connections and making everyone who's, who sees themselves as an individual contributor to that creative space in our community, bringing them together so that they can be stronger, stronger as a collective. So the final, I do want to bring up now the Dubuque Museum of Art, Gary Stoppelman, who is their Executive Director, to talk about their project that connects to the cultivating connections piece.
Thank you Jenny. Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. City Manager, my name's Gary Stoppelman, the Executive Director of the Dubuque Museum of Art. Connecting has become probably the most important word in our mission, and I'll explain that in a very quick second. In 2021, the Board of Trustees approved a new five-year strategic plan that clearly articulates our vision for the museum of the future, for the community of the future. We can, we considered and took our cues from the Imagine Dubuque Comprehensive Plan, the Arts and Culture Master Plan, as Jenny has laid out, and the Equitable Poverty Reduction Plan. To begin with, we focused on identifying the primary opportunity that the museum addresses in partnership with you all and everyone in this room. There is an opportunity to increase dialogue, understanding, and shared experiences in our community, between people of different generations, backgrounds, beliefs, and perceptions. We articulated our vision of the community we want to build with you as a thriving hub, where people of diverse backgrounds and perspectives together achieve a deep understanding of the past, an empathetic view of the present, and an inspired outlook for the future. This is now our why, and we refined our how, our mission. We create engaging art experiences that excite, inspire, and most importantly and essentially connect our community. So I'm here to say thank you for supporting the first large-scale program that brought that mission to life, Vietnam: The Real War. Annual support from the city is the foundation that supports the planning of major projects like this. In addition, it was the special, supportive special projects that extended our reach into the community in ways we could not on our own. I hope that you all had a chance to view it. Tempted though I am, I won't put you on the spot. Singular, it was a singular It was a singular experience that connected multiple perspectives, as you see in this picture, and provoked conversation around the question, how do we tell the truth in war? With your support, we expanded and extended a traveling exhibition of Pulitzer Prize-winning Associated Press photographs taken by the Saigon Bureau of the Associated Press. Those photographs inspired a partnership with Voices and the American Legion, where an active-duty reserve reserve combat photographer painted a mural inspired by one of those iconic images. Corbin Lundborg is the artist's name. As you toured this gallery, you were also and considered the AP photographs, you were also surrounded by artifacts carried by soldiers into battle. These were part of the local story. They came from a local collection and gave us a new way of considering this question and considering the two-dimensional objects that were on the wall. That installation was inspired by Tim O'Brien's acclaimed book, The Things That They Carried, and inspired a partnership with Carnegie Stout. Together with Carnegie Stout, we hosted a virtual conversation with Mr. O'Brien and about 100 college professors, high school English teachers, students, veterans, and artists who came together on Veterans Day to talk about their experiences and Mr. O'Brien's experience. In partnership with the Grouse Museum, we recorded and shared video interviews with local vets who shared their stories, many for the first time. If you haven't seen those, I encourage you to visit dbqart.org. They are still up there. On the ground floor, we added more local stories, Bob Woodward Jr., Jim Gelades, and an artist who's in our collection as a fine art photographer, but who during the war served as a combat photographer on the USS Ticonderoga. Mercy Hospital provided content about the lingering health effects of the war and resources available in our community. The partnerships extended outside beyond our walls. We talked about the mural, but also into the University of Dubuque, Fly By Night Productions. We talked about the library. And then it was the marketing reach provided by special grants, special projects that was key to, in fact, the fact that this exhibition brought us back to 2019 and 2018 attendance levels, reintroducing the museum to the community. And importantly, and perhaps certainly humbly, but somewhat magically, it brought together folks, I don't fully understand exactly how and why, but that during these historically divisive times, this historically divisive topic became something that it was okay to talk about. We saw during the run of this show, we saw over five about 500 veterans walk through our doors, which is an increase of about 500 veterans over the same period a year before. So thank you very much for your support.
Thanks, Gary. So that is just a taste of some of the the bigger, more exciting things that we saw coming to fruition in 2021. What we'll be focusing on, and by we meaning Office of Arts and Cultural Affairs and the Arts and Cultural Affairs Advisory Commission, what we'll be focusing on in 2022 as we move forward is some of the things that you see up on the screen in addition to just our our standard grant programs and hosting Art on the River, getting back to some of the Arts Mean Business activities. These six areas of conducting an Arts and Economic Prosperity Study through Americans for the Arts, that will actually be kicking off in May, and we'll be doing surveying throughout an entire 12-month period to get us some new economic impact numbers to be released mid 2023, late 2023, somewhere in there. We are actually releasing those guidelines this year around the GARE refunding and the NEA subgranting. And with that will be some short-term grant administrative staff that's being supported by the NEA grant. We'll be focusing on really pushing forward with the commission's strategic plan, which they'll be driving, and then I'll be there as staff to help to support. We're collaborating with the planners of the pollin the city's Pollinator Week and the Black History Survey to infuse some arts and culture-focused activities and practices in the community engagement part of those of those projects. I think an overall approach for 2022 is going to be helping to ensure that an arts and arts, a creativity, a culture-centered sort of planning and thinking is at the forefront of collaborations and projects coming out of different areas of of city government. And then really just focusing on that continued relationship building, that has been something that's has been proved so vital for us throughout throughout the pandemic to move work forward. So I'll leave you with the things where 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 we sort of see and we talk with the commission about places where we see the city council being able to have a role in propelling the Arts and Culture Master Plan forward. And some of these you might end up seeing in the form of improvement packages to come in future years. They might be policies that are coming before you for adoption and approval. And also just things that if you as individuals are kind of interested in these topics, we definitely, you know, there there's places where with especially like with this formal nonprofit partnership idea, that's something that we're really going to be researching and exploring of what does that look like? And it might be a place for the the city council, when those things come forward, to to put forward their ideas of what they see that possibly looking like. So just these six recommendations, I'll just go through them quickly, is the one is the idea of doing what we can to increase capacity and to have city arts and cultures experience personnel that's that's working on city projects. And whether that means staffing, that's actually an ongoing, long-term staffing, or maybe that means ideas around hiring and creating programs where we're hiring artists and creatives to be temporary consultants in projects or within departments. Looking at filling the funding gap in the operating support program, currently we have a budget of $250,000 for that program. But as the the breadth and the the size of those organizations who we fund increase, we're actually, we're looking at this year as requests comes requests come in at probably having about $320,000 worth of requests brought forward from their those organizations. We envision that there will be a public art policy coming forward to city council to consider yet this year and anticipate that there will probably be the suggestion of a 1% for the arts kind of option or idea within that within that policy. Supporting individual artists, funding artists and creative business funding streams. So looking at what does the impact of this NEA pilot funding program have to make some new things happen? And then, again, exploring that nonprofit partnership and then also just keeping at the forefront that the arts and culture and those sort of practices and experiences can be a vital tool in the COVID recovery and in infrastructure grant requests coming forward. So that's all. Here's my contact information. So I didn't leave. I left you two minutes for some discussion. I'm sorry about that.
That is okay. We got a lot of great information tonight, Jenny, and everybody who was able to speak with us. So thank you very much. We really appreciate it. We probably will just go ahead and email questions out if we do have them after the presentation, so I'd encourage all of us to do that. And we'll get started with our regular meeting. But thank you very much for all your work and for everything that you explained to us tonight. Really appreciate it.
Apologies again for not leaving time for the
No need. You used your time very efficiently, all the way right up to the end. So we will stand adjourned in this work session since there's no further business.